All right, welcome to this evening's meeting. We will have a silent prayer as an invocation to be followed by the pledge of allegiance. If you would, please stand with me. Thank you.
Okay, so I got it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our January 19, 2021 business meeting. Our first order of business is adoption of the agenda. Any board members like to offer any amendments?
Well, before we do that, let's conduct roll call.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Sana Gregory.
Present, I'm present.
Commissioner Gail Hambrick. Commissioner Gail Hambrick. Disappeared. Commissioner Felicia Franklin.
I'm present.
Commissioner Demont Davis?
Present.
Okay, we'll wait for her to, well, I won't wait for her, but she was present. I think she's having technical difficulties, Commissioner Hambrick, but we will proceed on. Madam Clerk, we're on the agenda modifications or deletions. I would like to make a motion to remove the veteran of the month that was placed on the agenda in error. Is there a second?
So be.
All right, properly moved and seconded, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Any others?
Move that we remove item 20 for discussion.
All right, there's a motion on table to remove item 20, resolution 20, well, to remove it to, to move it to regular agenda. Resolution 2021-24 authorizing Clayton County to enter into an agreement with development authority of the city of Forest Park. I'll second the motion, those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Any others?
Uh, Chairman.
Commissioner Hambrick. I believe that's you.
Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello?
You're on mute.
Hear me?
I can hear you.
Uh-uh, it's not, it's not.
You're breaking up on us, Commissioner Hambrick.
They can't hear me? Okay, I don't, what, at what part are you, because it's gonna get me out again while I switch over to the, to the account site. You all asking changes to the agenda?
Any changes to the agenda is where we are. Before we adopt it.
Okay, I have some info, this thing picks me out.
Yes, go ahead and try it, you're breaking up terribly.
Oh, Lord. Uh, let's see, uh, I would like to pull out, um, number 5, which is resident 2021-19.
All right, does it, do you want to put it on the regular agenda or you just want to remove it from the agenda?
I was trying to pull, just, I would like to just pull for now.
I, I can't understand you.
A motion to pull it is what I think Commissioner said.
Are you asking to pull it all together, Commissioner?
Right, to pull it.
All right, that's the motion, is there a second?
I want to, yes.
All right, is there a second to our motion?
A second to motion.
All right, properly moved and seconded, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Commissioner Hambrick, did you want to have it removed until the next meeting or is there a date that you'd like to place on it?
Okay, also, Chairman, I have. You there?
Yes, you're going in and out, Commissioner.
Okay, uh, I'd like to, amendment 222, the phase of the brand.
What number?
Can you hear me?
What resolution number is that, Commissioner?
No, it's a, uh, 222.
Second.
I didn't ask for a second yet. I'm trying to understand what her, what her motion is. Is it the?
Yeah.
I'm not clear on your, which one you're pulling, Commissioner.
Uh, let's, I can tell exactly, I'm clean. Mr. Father Fox, direct.
Do you understand what she's saying?
Trying to find the agenda.
Can you just tell us what item number it is?
It's the one, uh, Ms. President, it's, uh, presenting.
What number?
It's 2-22. Chairman, I think it's item number 13.
Is that correct, Commissioner Hambrick? Item 13.
That's correct, number 13, that is number 13.
Okay, that's budget amendment 2-22, fiscal year 21 communications to provide funding for phase two of the countywide branding contract in the amount of $161,037. Is there a second?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, any questions?
Is there to pull it from the agenda?
Yes, you want your, your, your motion is to pull it all together, right? Or you're pulling it to put it on the, uh?
Yes, that's correct.
Regular agenda. Okay, the motion is to remove.
That's to pull it all together.
Okay. All right, the motion was made, there's a second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm opposed, there's four, one, it passes. All right, any others?
Okay, another, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, go ahead.
I would, number 20, uh, resolution 2021-24.
We've already had a motion to place that on the.
I just put that on the regular, I need an, I want to put that, explanation.
Yeah, that's already been done, Commissioner. Any others? All right, if there are no others, then is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Can we hold one second because I too am having technical difficulties, that's why I came in the room. So I need to, um, just double check if I can, if you don't mind, please hold on a second. Yeah, because I'm, you have the iPad isn't working, so, because my email hasn't been working.
You talking to me, Matthew or the clerk? Huh? Because when they finish with this, I want to go out and come back in if you don't mind, Matthew.
All right, um, that would be it, I think item number 23, 2021, 27 is on here, but, um, I don't need to pull that one at this time, that's it.
All right, so a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
I'll second the motion, any questions? Here and none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
The board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes, maximum time to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparatory remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
All right, Jackie So.
Greetings. My name is Jackie Sullivan, I am a member of Clayton County for almost 15, well, almost 20 years, actually. Um, it's been said that a picture is worth a thousand words, and I would like to present a picture of, I'm here representing Faith Walk Ministries Incorporated, I'm one of the associate pastors. I've been a member for about, oh, about 12 years, I think. Um, but I know that we're concerned about Clayton County's beautification, but we're concerned about the beautification of the lives of the people in Clayton County. If they're not fed and if they're not clothed and if they're not properly assisted with getting jobs and their mental capacity satisfied, they're not going to be able to keep a good yard, they're not going to be able to maintain their homes or their jobs and their children's lives. So it's just as important to us to make sure that their insides or their hearts are beautified just as much as, and we have a leader and a pastor that her goal is to do that, change lives one at a time. Yes, we're concerned about the outside of the building, but if we're not allowed to take care of the inside of the hearts of the people while we work on the outside of the building, because we, that is a priority of ours as well, we will be doing our county a total dissatisfaction.
Thank you. Pat Bryant, and also see behind her name is Mr. Gentili. Were y'all speaking one at a time or? Okay. Speak one at a time, sir.
Was the first person zoning, was that, um, related to a zoning matter?
I don't think so.
Sure, it is, that is a zoning action.
Okay, so let me say this, anybody who wants to speak in reference to a zoning hearing, we will have a public hearing for all zoning matters after we finish with their regular agenda. So this would not be the time for you to speak about a zoning matter. However, if you want to use your time since you signed up to speak for any other reason, you can do so. Excuse me? I just made a comment, ma'am, please take it.
Good evening to the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Turner, Chairman Turner. Our concerns and issues is we have our subdivision.
Can I get your name, please?
Patricia Pat Bryant, Pat Bryant. And our concerns, Chairman, is our subdivision is over 40 years old and we are in desperate need for streetlights in our subdivision. It's like trying to, it's a, it's a complete thorough route from Way Up Road through our subdivision with no lights at night and to make it to the gas stations and the Dollar General on Highway 85. So you have people walking all through the night in the dark, so it's, number one is safety issue. Uh, then we have a vacant lot that's turned into a dumping ground, and when you wake up in the morning and see anything, it's trash, tires, everything. I've addressed it with code enforcement, couldn't get anywhere. Uh, the statement was made by code enforcement, once a lot is vacant, it's a, the county allows it to return to the original state, but it's growed up and it's a dumping ground. Then number two issue is with the eviction process in Clayton County. Commissioner, Chairman, I filed for eviction the 1st of March last year, and you heard that President Biden is going to extend it. What help or assistance is available for landlords? I'm retired, but I don't receive social security, and I read in one of my emails from Commissioner Franklin that Clayton County had received a grant, but that was my income. I'm not eligible to apply for unemployment. So what type of help is it for the landlord? Because it don't look like we're gonna never be able to get rid of the tenant. So that's, that's my issue.
Okay, so, so let me say this, in reference to the evictions, of course, President Biden is going, has put out that order, so we can't evict them. Uh, there is rental assistance that we're working on for your renters, be able to pay the landlords, but there's a process for that in reference to your.
Do you really think though, Coach Chairman, if the check is made out to them, do you really think we're gonna get the check?
I think it's made out to the landlord, I could be wrong on that. Yes, CEO saying, yes, the check's made out to the landlord, not to the renters. Uh, reference to your streetlights, there's a process, a petition that you must undertake, and Mr. Matarco, the head of our TND department, will walk you through it if you need that, but yeah.
Yeah, transportation and development, they've been various, uh, helpful.
Great, I'm glad to hear that. So work on that, and we can get it on the agenda, we'll vote for it, and then we can get that working, okay?
Okay.
And then what's the address or location of the vacant lot that you're speaking of?
8449 North Pond Drive, Riverdale 30274.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Franklin?
Yes, that's a resident of District 3, so thank you so much for bringing that to our attention, and, um, I would like for us to reference the question that you just asked afterwards, because, um, just please put a note on that, Chairman, so we can speak on that.
I'm not clear what you're asking. I'm not clear what you're asking, speak on what?
I need to speak with you afterwards, thank you.
All right, uh, Mr. Gentili.
Good afternoon, actually, I said Gentini.
Gentini?
Gentini, yes, that's G E N T I N Y.
Okay, it's T I L L Y is what I got.
They've just spelled it wrong, but it's okay. Um, actually, I'm here to speak on the same issues that Ms. Bryant had brought before you earlier about the safety in the community of North Pond, there being no lights. Um, it is a through fair where people are going from one street to the other, and it's very dark, I myself have almost hit someone passing the street because it was so dark, could not see them. And since, uh, 2008, when the market had gone down for housing, a lot of houses were empty in the community, I'm starting to see that happen again because of the pandemic, and people are beginning to break into cars, eventually they'll start breaking back into homes again, so we really need those streetlights in the community. Second thing I'd like to address is what Ms. Pat also brought up was about tenants and what can we do to help the landlords. Um, I know you have some things in place, but if there's anything else that you can do to assist the landlords with this, uh, it would greatly be appreciated, because we use that as our income as well as being landlords in the community, and we cannot pay our bills if the tenants aren't paying their bills, so that's.
Thank you. This looks like Darren Reed, maybe?
How you doing today?
It's good, good.
I don't have a landlord issue, but.
State your name for us.
My name is Darian Reed, and I'm in North Pond subdivision as well, and the lighting there is terrible. I mean, if you could see what we did there in the last month with the entrance alone, we rebuilt that area, and we're trying to keep it that way. I mean, I've worked hard, Mr. Gentini has worked hard, I mean, in the dirt, we done built a new sign out there, we're trying to clean the area up, so that lot they was talking about, I would love to, I sweep up that neighborhood personally, you know, but the neighbors won't help me, you know? So if I can get some lights, it would help me, man, I really would appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Mickey Garber.
Commissioner, may I remove my mask?
Yes, sir.
To speak clearly. Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, unincorporated, Rex George. The, the reason I'm here speaking tonight is on the subject of some of our county employees and the request tonight for number 11 on the agenda. This concerns the probate court and the request for part-time employees. The reason I'm speaking to that is because I recently had to go there to, to get a weapons permit, and I want to speak on behalf of the people that assisted me, and I want everybody else that visits that court to be treated as well as I was treated, how efficient they were in their job. There was nobody down there dilly-dallying, chit-chatting, they were all about business. This is my tax dollars, my tax dollars, and seeing my tax dollars and all of our tax dollars spent well, and treatment of the citizens of the county. I would like to personally thank Ms. Parker, who assisted on the computer, Ms. McCoy on the paperwork, and Ms. Shuntoria, who set up my appointment. That is why I'm here speaking tonight is to recognize those people and their job that they're doing and how well a citizen appreciates their position. I would hope that you pass the request for the added employees, and I would hope sincerely that you pass it unanimously. Thank you very much for your time. Do you have any questions?
No questions, but I would like to say, I appreciate you bringing, anytime an employee is doing an excellent job, we appreciate getting acknowledgement of that, so, and I'm glad the judge is sitting in the audience today to hear that our employees are doing such a good job, so thank you. Thank you, Judge.
You did approach me last week, and I have already put that in their file, so I put it in his personnel file.
Thank you for that, thank you.
Does it require my signature?
No, sir.
It does not, it's already been taken care of.
Very good.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment.
The board will now hear the, approve the consent agenda, and there are items 1 through 12, 14, 16 through 19, 21 and 23 through 23.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion, any questions on any of the items? Here and none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
The first item is Resolution 2021-24, resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into an agreement with the Development Authority of the City of Forest Park, and Mr. Attorney?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair and Board. Resolution 2021-24 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into an agreement with the Development Authority of the City of Forest Park, Georgia, and Ocado Solutions, U.S. Co- LLC, providing for the terms and conditions under which a payment in lieu of abhorrent taxes shall be made to Clayton County in the absence of such abhorrent taxes being assessed on certain machinery and equipment. To authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and to otherwise to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes.
All right, so a motion. I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Probably move to second, any questions?
Uh, yes, I have a question, this is Hambrick. Uh, what does it, what does this mean exactly?
So, uh, the city of Forest Park and, or the Development Authority, excuse me, the city of Forest Park entered into, uh, an agreement with Ocado and Kroger in which Ocado bought equipment to be used for processing food items and other supplies. So, uh, in the past, these types of agreements were made between the Development Authority and the person who was going to be at Fort Gillum with no sharing of any taxes, all the tax benefits went to Forest Park. Um, this time, as it relates to the equipment that is at issue in that, um, with that facility, they have proposed allowing the tax assessor to assess the equipment on an annual basis and through a formula that's too detailed to go into right now, uh, but encompasses the number of employees and certain other, um, incentives that the county would, um, get a payment in lieu of taxes, the Development Authority would own or purchase that equipment, pay the county payment in lieu of taxes over a period of time, 20 years to be exact, and that money would be split with the school board and the city of Forest Park. It would be related to personal equipment only, not real estate as it relates to this particular agreement right now.
Okay, because that, that was confusing to me, because, um, I remember, I recall back some years ago when Forest Park actually kicked the county out, period, you know, far, the city of Forest Park was getting all the money, so I'm just surprised that they're coming to us, uh, with this, and, and I was just trying to figure out what is the county getting out of this, because from what I understand, I've been told over a period of time that Forest Park, uh, receives all the benefits from Fort Gillum.
And let me, let me add this, Commissioner Hambrick, a while back, if you recall, we had a conversation, and I had a conversation with Commissioner Gregory about Forest Park and not being able to collect, uh, property tax and so forth, and how we felt like we should have some means of, of getting revenue from that area, uh, because they were giving abatements, property tax abatements to the people who were coming, the companies that were coming in. So I had a conversation with the city of Forest Park, and some of this was born out of that to come up with a pilot program from which, for which, uh, the county would be able to receive some funds, so that is somewhat of what spurred this initiative.
What did the school board say? I mean, is the school board going along with it too?
Well, but, yeah, from my understanding, yes, simply because other than receiving no money, they're receiving some money as a result of this pilot program.
For me, it's, has a tax commissioner been pulled into the conversation? Because for me, it's how does this impact us in the future, as far as revenues, no revenues, looking at the calculations here, as far as what was it, some payment percentage and employment factors? If we are going to receive, and we have all these calculations and all these if, if and conditions, it seems like there's a point to where we possibly could get nothing.
So, it, the simplest way is, um, we would get nothing now if they did not enter into a pilot agreement. So, right now, they are extending, um, somewhat of, a response, responding somewhat to the county's concerns that have been shared with them about all of the tax benefits that have gone to them, both in personal property and in real estate in the past, so they are proposing this as a, as an alternative. Um, the tax commissioner, we've had some conversations with about him being the person that would facilitate this, but it could go with the tax commissioner facilitating these payments in lieu of taxes, or the county could do so. For timing purposes, we weren't able to go through the tax commissioner, because they kind of gave it to him at the last minute back at the end of last year.
Okay.
And so, they've already closed on it, there's money that is going to be coming in, so we need to have a vehicle to be able to take those payments when they do come in and be able to spread that. and be able to spread that both to the county, to the school board, and some percentage also to the city.
And he has, the tax commissioner has been involved in some of the conversations because he's the one who referred it to us when they wanted him to sign an agreement, sign this agreement originally.
Okay, that's an improvement. That's, that's good.
It's a start.
Yeah.
But he still has to sign off on it. My question is then...
No, we sign off.
We sign, okay, so the tax commissioner doesn't have to sign?
Right, because these are, these are payments in lieu of taxes.
Correct. And from what I've been reading...
It binds the county.
It binds the county.
The tax commissioner cannot do that.
Right, but what I'm hearing also too is a lot of these vendors will get these payment in lieu of taxes, tax programs set up for themselves, and then sell off. And in a sense, they take and leave. So, we're still bound, there's a whole lot of unanswered questions. And for me, it's just, I want to know how this is going to impact us in the next three, four, five, 10 years.
Um, well, again, the alternative is we get nothing. So, right now, they are at least proposing that there is a vehicle in which that we can receive money over a period of time. The alternative has been, historically, that the county would get no benefit at all from whether it's personal property or real property. So, yes, can, this is a, this is the beginning of a step, and can we do more in the future as we, you know, try to negotiate? But a lot of that is somewhat out of our hands because the city, the property is not in Clayton County. It's not owned by Clayton County. So, most of this is just, I mean, not to give them a whole lot of, you know, too much credit, but that they are doing this to try to be a, a good municipal neighbor to some degree.
Well, Chuck, Chuck, you said the, it is in Clayton County. It's just, yeah, it is in Clayton County, it's just in the city of Forest Park. But I mean, if we get something out of it, I'm, I'm okay if we get something out of it because I do remember when they just pushed us out altogether.
And like I said, I took those concerns that we, Commissioner Gregory and Commissioner Hugh Hambrik, that we took to the mayor to talk about it, so.
And I should speak correctly, it's not in unincorporated Clayton County, that's what I meant to say.
All right, any other questions?
If I can speak, please.
Commissioner Franklin? Commissioner Franklin?
Thank you. I do have to agree with Commissioner Hambrik, Gregory, and Commissioner Davis. Thank you for pulling this, and I understand that we got it at the last minute. But I think it's important that we understand what that formula is. It sounds good when one can say we either get something or nothing. But at the end of the day, this board is making the decision. We need to know what the something is and what it's based upon as well. And then also, even though it's historically done a certain way, you know, a lot of times it's done in practice, but it may not be legally done. And so, unless we have that information to support our decision, I have to honestly go along with Commissioner Davis, but this is not in a district where we serve. So, I think that the collective whole will be able to make that decision. But I think for the record and for us to move forward, we need to understand that this would have been something that would have been great to go on our work session so that we would have the information and not feel like we're back in the corner and have to make a decision. Um, we don't want to give that precedent to think that this board will be making decisions because, well, we got to create a vehicle because we're going to give us some money. Well, what is this some money? What is it in lieu of? Are you giving me a dollar when I really should have been getting 300,000? You know, we need to know those things. I think there are a lot of holes there, so.
I think that information was disseminated in the paperwork that we had.
Yeah.
In our booklets.
Yeah.
It outlined, it outlined the MOU and the payments that we would be receiving and all.
Well, anticipate the payments, not the payments.
Work session, sir, that's what they're for. We have all kinds of technical difficulties this week, but...
Any other questions? I'm sorry.
Linda Flora, back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Those in favor, aye.
Aye. Aye.
And I'm opposed, just because I don't have enough information, that's all.
Anybody else oppose?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Before we go to the next, please allow us to back up for a minute.
Hold on a second, hold on a second, Commissioner Gregory.
Twenty-three.
Commissioner Gregory, I'm sorry to interrupt. We took a vote, and now are you opposing or did you? Okay, so it's, so let's go ahead and close this out. It was four to one, it passes.
I want to point out something concerning that resolution.
Yeah, yeah, I just want to make sure Madam Clerk collected the votes. Okay, go ahead with your point.
Okay. I was on social media today, and I heard a media person say, was telling about what was going to be on the agenda tonight. And she mentioned that resolution, and she said, I'm assuming they're raising the prices. So, we need to clarify for the public, because that was on social media, that this is not, that Parks and Rec is not raising prices. And perhaps somebody can clarify exactly what Resolution 2123 is doing so that the public won't think we are raising our fees.
Okay, is that next resolution up? Or was that what was on the consent agenda? Okay, all right, we'll allow Mr. COO to come and explain. First of all, state what resolution was. What's the resolution number so everybody can follow along?
Twenty-three.
It's number nineteen.
Authorizing Parks and Rec.
All right, it's Resolution 202123, item number nineteen. Please proceed, Mr. COO.
Yes, Chairman, so the resolution in question is dealing with the amendment of the Parks and Recreation Fees and Charges policy. If the board remembers, we had a couple of requests from, for special facility use requests for a couple of the parks facilities. And unfortunately, some of the areas that we have our clients or our constituents wanting to utilize is not part of their rental policy. Point in case, we had the Democratic Party that wanted to utilize the parking lot at the, the South Clayton Recreation Center. So, in short, what this has done is amended the policy where that the Parks and Recreation Director can rent those spaces out that traditionally are not part of the rental policy. So, now, the parking lot and some of the other ancillary spaces within Parks and Recreation is now part of their, their fees and charges policy. It's in essence what this resolution has done.
That's all I wanted to do because it's been put out there. I think they're raising the prices, I mean, raising the fees. So, I wanted to make sure we clarified that tonight. Thank you.
And one more quick point. Um, thank you again, Commissioner Gregory, for that. If we could send something out through our media, communications would be great because I think this is a positive for us getting prepared through COVID. So, it opens up additional opportunities for people to come into our county to utilize our spaces. And so, Commissioner Gregory, that will also give us a means to be able to combat that, just proactiveness.
All right, next, Madam Clerk.
Item number twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six are board appointments. Mr. Chairman?
All right. First board appointment is to the Behavior, Health, and Developmental Disabilities, Region Three Advisory Council. It will be Commissioner Hambrik's selection. Ms. Jody Chambers' term will expire on November 30th, 2020. It's expired already, but she's still sitting in that position until somebody else is named. The new term will begin November 30th, 2020, and will expire November 30th of 2023. Commissioner Hambrik?
Yes, I would like to appoint Dr. Monica Hooker.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Who was that made the second? Who made the second?
I didn't, was that Commissioner Franklin that made the second?
Gregory.
Gregory, Commissioner Gregory. Those opposed? It's unanimous. All right, next board appointment is to Ethics Board, Commissioner Gregory's selection. This is a one-year term, begins with District One, and continuing in numerical order on January 1st of each year. This year, it starts with District One. Commissioner Gregory.
Yes, sir. I offer a motion to put Ms. Ashley Wright on the Ethics Board.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Commissioner Hambrik, second to motion, those in favor, aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Next board appointment is to the Department of Behavior, Health. This is also Commissioner Gregory's selection. Melinda Morgan's appointment will end on January 31st, 2021. A member may serve no more than two consecutive terms, and Ms. Morgan has served two terms. Therefore, she is no longer eligible for reappointment. The new term will begin on January 31st, 2021, expire January 31st of 2024. Commissioner?
Yes, sir. I will, I'll for motion to place Ms. Mia Ballinger on the Behavior, Health Board. Second.
Commissioner Hambrik, second to motion, those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed? It's unanimous.
Our next item is item number twenty-seven, BOC-2003-0046, Requesting to Rezone RS-180 to PUD, Community Development.
All right, good evening, Chairman and Board Members. Tyler McSwain, representing Planning and Zoning Staff. Uh, the request before you today is the request for a PUD. There is an associated preliminary plat associated with this request. Uh, for this request, staff is recommending approval, and we actually recommend that it be tabled, excuse me, for 30 days.
All right, is the applicant present? Please state your name for us.
Uh, John Jordan with Hect Walker, 205 Corporate Center Drive, St. Bruce, Georgia, 30281.
Is it your desire to table?
Uh, what, if staff's recommendation is that, we definitely would go along with that.
Okay, this is in Commissioner Franklin's district. Uh, Commissioner Franklin?
Yes, I have a question. Why are we tabling this again? Because this item is one that I've pushed back for three months, I believe, two or three months, to ensure that we wouldn't continue to have it coming before us and then having to table it. So, what is the purpose of tabling this item again?
Yes, Commissioner Warner, uh, the applicant has provided us an updated site plan, which we will need to have to go through our Technical Review Committee Board. And that way, we can provide comments to make sure all of the departments have reviewed over the most recent plans, which will allow them within the next cycle for the February 16th Board of Commissioners meeting with the, a review that can be presented to you all as well.
And I believe that it also included, Fayette County had handed over, I guess, approval of County Line Road, the entrance to Clayton County. And over the past month or so, there's been discussions between the owner and Clayton County, and they've finally approved, Clayton County's finally approved the location, a new location of the entrance, which is about 100 feet north of the original entrance. So, that had to go back to the surveyor to do a little minor revisions to that. But because there were some revisions to it, and, uh, staff, I believe, is recommending or would, would like to have the TRC look at it again before it goes to final approval or, or consideration.
Thank you. One other question, uh, when did you all find out that you didn't have what you need, what you needed to move forward with this? Or whatever, where to, I mean, to have this board make a vote? When did you find that out?
Uh, I, I found it out, I believe, probably sometime last week.
Last week. Community development, when did we find this out?
Uh, staff has been in communication with the applicant, so there was communication last week regarding the updated information on the road improvements and the site plan. So, at that particular point, we notified the applicant that we will make a decision based upon the information that we had received, the site plan, and how long it will take, depending on what we receive, in order to get a complete review.
And staff was pretty quick with, we've been in communication with that. The, the timing difference was in the approval of the, the current plan by Transportation, County Transportation. That got done, and then we had to turn it over to Expedite a preliminary, new preliminary plat. But the timing just wasn't there, we learned and all figured out last week to be able to go to a final decision today.
Okay. One last question, how will the residents be notified? Because they're going to call our office, and they've been calling. And the concern is thinking that, that there's more going on than there, there really is. So, how are we going to notify the residents of, of that area?
I actually, I, I emailed the, the email addresses that I do have of the area residents that I got from the Community Information Meeting, along with Mr. Larry Vincent, about the, the new update. Sent them a copy of the updated preliminary plat. But again, you know, I'm sure that it didn't get to everybody because I, I don't have everybody's email address. But I tried to, to reach out with that, Commissioner.
Okay, I'm willing to table this, but I, I am going to make a special request because this area was one that was very, it was a real sore spot for those 1,200 residents down in Rivers Edge. That notification goes out to the residents, and it needs to be sent. I guess, Chuck, if you need to figure out how to do it, it needs to be paid by the applicant, but it does not need to be in the applicant's envelope. It needs to be county notice so that everybody knows what's going on. Because it puts me in a very difficult situation as Commissioner because I have to take those calls, and I'm not over this process. So, is that too much to ask, Mr. Reed or Chairman? Can someone let me know? And this is not for me asking, this is for the service of the people in which I serve.
I believe that it's part of the zoning, y'all correct me if I'm wrong, but is that part of the zoning that the applicant has to send that out? I don't...
I believe so, Mr. Franklin.
Yes, it, it is part of our requirement that in order to read the public notice, that is part of that process.
Yes, but, um, just to answer Commissioner Gregory, I'll go ahead and put it on record. What happened is I received several phone calls and emails because there was a notification sent out with the county's, on the county's letterhead in the applicant's envelope. That really soared a true sense of distrust, and it was, it was something that definitely could have been avoided. So, Mr. Chairman, however y'all decide to do it, I will table it, I'll make a recommendation to table it. But the applicant, the residents need to be notified in a proper manner, in a manner that's consistent with other jurisdictions and not one in which we're going to receive a lot of phone calls and questions.
Duly noted, Commissioner.
Thank you. My recommendation is to table it. Um, I guess, go ahead and table it for another 60 days at this point, 60, not 30.
Give us a date, Mr. McSwain.
Yes, the 60 days would be the March 16th, 2021 BOC meeting.
March 16th?
Yes.
Is that part of your motion, Commissioner Franklin?
Yes, sir, it is, and 60 days.
All right, so the motion is to table till March 16th. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hambrik, second to motion, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, sir.
The next item is item 28, I believe, that is plat 2006, that's 0013, preliminary plat, requesting preliminary plat approval for 35 single-family lots, community development.
Chairman and Board Members, again, this is associated with the previous request that was tabled. In this situation, staff will recommend for it to be tabled, but also with the March 16th date. So, it remains on the same calendar cycle.
Advocate, come back up, just so we get it on record. State your name.
Uh, John Jordan, Hect Walker, PC, 205, 75.
Is it your desire to table this as well?
Uh, we go along with the recommendation of staff.
Commissioner Franklin?
Yes, I make a recommendation to table it, again, for the next 60 days. Um, I believe they said the date is March 16th.
That's correct, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, sir.
I believe we're up again on the next Thursday.
Oh, okay, well, I have a seat right behind you then.
The next item is item number 29, BOC 2009-0062, CUP to Allow For Automotive Repair Center.
Advocate? Oh, wait a minute, Mr. McSwain, go ahead.
Yes. Again, Chairman and Board Members, the applicant before you, Zag had recommended approval of the applicant's request, and with two conditions, and I'll read the conditions for the record. One, staff recommended, "The use of the property shall be limited to one bay auto service center in Suite Number Nine. No outdoor storage or tires, equipments, or service repair may be allowed or may be conducted inside the service bay." Zag recommended a second condition, that the condition use permit will be issued to the applicant, Mr. Lutio Olakodi only, and change in ownership will require a CUP. Mr. Alutio Olakodi only, and change in ownership will require a C U P.
My apologies, actually.
The applicant here. Please take the mic, please. Please state your name, and for the record, how many minutes would you like to reserve, if any, for rebuttal? So if somebody's opposed to it, you get ten minutes to speak, or less. So if you want to reserve like two minutes or three minutes to address anybody who might be opposed to your request, we'll do that at the end. So out of your ten minutes, are there any minutes you would like to reserve?
Yes, sir. I'd like to reserve about five minutes.
Five minutes?
Yes.
Okay, proceed on. Set the timer for five minutes, please.
Good evening, Chairman. Vice Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Alutio Olakodi, three two five Sunrise Avenue, St. Andrews, Georgia, zip three zero two eight one. I'm the applicant requesting the conditional use permit as stated by the gentleman. And the location is in the existing gas station, Exxon, at six five three nine, Georgia forty-two in Rex. And my goal is to replace brake bolts, trucks, shocks, and wheels within the building. And I'll landscape the area, plant trees or shrubs as suitable and adhere strictly to the conditions of my power. So as a matter of, kindly approve my application so I can start business over there and have people in the community.
Okay. Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing at this time, so is there anybody who would like to speak in favor of the applicant's request? Anybody like to speak in favor of? Anyone like to speak in opposition to?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Garber, please take the mic.
May I remove my mask? I'm not here to speak specifically for or against anybody who wishes to have a business in our county. What I am asking for is these business owners be responsible for not only inside their store, but outside their store. And the grounds bordering county property and their property, that trash should be picked up. Nobody is taking responsibility for these businesses that, yes, they have a dumpster, yes, they have trash cans, and yes, their customers don't use them. However, with that remark being said, that business owner has to be held responsible for the cleanliness all around that store and the litter picked up. This will aid to the beautification and keeping Clayton clean and beautiful. I ask that you request that the business owner be part of the record that we continue to keep our county clean. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else want to speak in opposition? Anybody else? Sir, would you like to say anything else prior to turning it over to the Commissioner?
Yes, sir. Just to kind of, piggyback on... Just to kind of piggyback on what the gentleman said. I will adhere strictly to it. I will maintain the environment, keep it clean and tidy in and out all the time.
Thank you, sir. All right, Commissioner Gregory.
Sir, Mr....
Please take the podium again, Commissioner has a question.
Now, will, where you, the park, this is the old Mojo's, that little plaza where the old Mojo's used to be?
Yes, ma'am.
Is this where you're located, or just next door at the Exxon?
According to the picture, where is your shop going to be located?
It's going to be located in, yeah, right there. Yes, sir.
Okay. So now, are you going to be utilizing any of that ground space that's not paved?
No, not for the business, but my goal is to beautify the area and make it green.
Okay. If my colleagues remember, I think you were late at the last meeting, and we held this over, and you and I did have a Zoom meeting about this, and I don't know why, I was thinking it was right next door at that one, but I know exactly where you are now. I just, I want to, with the, go along with what Zag recommended, no storage of tires outside, no storage of cars. No, you know, we don't want to come out there and see fifty cars. We want your cars to be moving in and out as you fix them.
Correct.
So no car storage.
Yes, ma'am.
As Mr. Garber said, we, you know, would you be a model for us? I was going to say that before he got up. Would you be a model for us as to how an automotive shop can still be an automotive shop and help clean up? I mean, in your part of the parking lot and the other parts of the parking lot before it gets out to the street? You know, you can help us out with that. I'm asking that you not have any homemade signs. I know I can't, you know, I'm asking that you not have little homemade signs. I mean, what I'm asking is for this shop to be a beautiful shop.
Yes, ma'am. I promise it will be a beautiful shop, and it will be a model in the neighborhood and the county.
And again, that unpaved area, that's not any part of what you're going to be utilizing, right? Because we don't want to come by there and see cars just stacked up there.
I shall not do that.
Okay, and will your automotive shop only cater to your traditional cars and trucks, not your eighteen-wheelers and all of that? You're not getting into that, right?
Correct. I'm not getting into that, ma'am.
Okay, so again, with that said, Mr. Chair, I'm going to offer a motion to approve this with those stipulations of no tire storage on the outside, no car storage, no working on the, you know, the eighteen-wheelers or so forth there. And he has also promised to do some landscaping, as well as taking some responsibility on making sure that, you know, the entire place is kept clean.
All right, is there a second?
Second. Chairman and Board Members, before you made that motion, staff would like to make sure we are understanding, is there an amendment to the conditions as stated?
Okay, did you read the conditions?
Yes, there are a few more. I added a few more items.
Okay, so we want, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, that the petitioner is going to do some landscaping to beautify the place. He is going to assist in keeping that little plaza free of litter and cleaning up. And as well as his signage will not be, you know, the homemade signage. Also, he will not utilize the unpaved portion of this little plaza area for parking cars and all of that.
I understand we have five conditions.
Well, read them, read them all five together.
So I will read these conditions as noted. The use of the property shall be limited to one bay auto service center and suite number nine. No outdoor storage of tires, cars, or any other equipment or service repair may be conducted outside the service bay. The C U P would be issued, this is condition number two, the C U P would be issued to the applicant only, and change ownership will require a new C U P. In addition to that, we have condition number three, that there will be no parking on the unpaved portion of the property. Condition number four, there should be approved landscaping, or how would we want to state that condition I have here that we will have approved landscaping on the site. But we can form that condition to read that landscaping should be screened and approved according to our county code. And for signage, I can put it here that the signage shall be reviewed by Planning and Zoning Staff in accordance to the sign ordinance of our ordinance.
That's fine. And also, his automotive services do not extend to like the eighteen-wheelers and all of that. It's just for, you know, regular cars and trucks. All right.
Hold on a second, Commissioner. You have something else, Mr. McSwain?
Okay, yes, stating that the condition regarding the pave, that it will not be used on the unpaved plaza area for parking cars. So we will note that, and that note regarding the condition on the paving.
So you're in agreeance with those conditions?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so does your motion stand with the stipulations, Commissioner Gregory?
Yes, sir.
All right, who's second on the motion?
I did.
Commissioner Davis second. Any questions? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you, sir.
The next item is item number thirty, B O C twenty-ten dash zero zero six four. C U P to allow a food pantry and a clothing donation center.
Again, Chairman and Board Members, this request, before you, staff is requesting that this petition to be tabled for sixty days in regards to the preparation of pre-construction for the site. Staff is aware that there are some minor facade changes that are appeared during this site, and staff would like to request the sixty-day table, which the applicant has stated they are okay with that. And this request will be moved to the March sixteenth B O C meeting if approved for tabling.
Is the applicant present? Please come forward. Please state your name, please.
My name is Lawrence Collins. I'm the chairman trustee of the Faithwalk Committee to sixty-eighty-four Riverdale Road College Park.
Is it your desire to table this request for another sixty days, till March sixteenth?
Yes, sir. We have, with the previous meeting, we have requested a meeting with Commissioner Director E... E G K met with us and came up with a lot of changes, removal of canopy. It's a major construction required, and we're going to ask to postpone because we got to get cost estimates and everything else to see the feasibility of doing it.
Okay. Commissioner Hamburg?
Yes, I move that we accept this request for change to sixty days to March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one.
All right, the motion is to table to March sixteenth. Is there a second?
Second.
Who's second, that, Commissioner Franklin?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir.
I wanted to say something else.
Please.
They were quite, my name is Diane Collins, and we have quite a few Clayton County residents who came out with this, and I just want them to stand, if that's okay. They're in support of this, and they said they wanted to be here tonight. And I just wanted the Commissioners to see the kind of support we have for this food pantry. It is truly something we need in this county. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
The next item is item number thirty-one, B O C dash two zero zero nine zero zero sixty-one. It's the C U P to allow used auto sales.
Chairman and Board Members, this request was denied by the Board of, I'm excuse you, by the Zone Advisory Board. Applicant is requesting car repair and used car sale dealership at the noted property located at sixty-two sixty-seven Riverdale Road. Again, staff was recommending approval of five conditions. Zag recommended to deny the applicant's request.
All right, is the applicant present? Please come forward. Please state your name and however many minutes you would like in rebuttal, should you get opposition to this request.
My name is Sunday O'Meara. Living in six two six seven Riverdale Road, Riverdale, Georgia, and the zip code is zero zero two seven four.
So do you want to reserve any minutes for rebuttal, should somebody be opposed to your request? Usually, two or three minutes, if you want.
Let's say two minutes.
All right, two minutes, set the timer for eight. All right, sir, you got eight minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not here to speak as a developer. I'm here to speak as a family man with three children that I love so much. Mr. Chairman, roughly five years ago, my family purchased this property. With the quest, the only purpose why we purchased it was to conduct a used car business, which is what we do. Few months after we came before you to allow us to conduct that business on the property, Mr. Chairman, you deny us the opportunity. And the reason you told us was it was a zone for that business. That was like five years ago. Mr. Chairman, after that decision, we'll be paying taxes on that property, pay mortgage, not using it for the past five years. Mr. Chairman, a few years ago, you changed the zoning on that property to general business. Doing so, Mr. Chairman, is like you gave us an invitation to come and utilize the property for the purpose of which we purchased it. Mr. Chairman, now we are here. I'm here by myself, I'm here with my family because we need to use the property for what we purchased it for. The staff recommends, they give us three conditions, which we will gladly adhere to. We will stand and obey those conditions, Mr. Chairman. I believe you might have one or two other conditions or recommendations to add to it. But at this point, Mr. Chairman, your decision today, we either make or break us on this property because we'll be waiting for this for over five years, Mr. Chairman. So I would like you to ask me or make any recommendation, but please, I would like you to make a decision with equity. I resent that.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody here want to speak in favor of this applicant's request? Anybody want to speak in favor? Anybody in opposition?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say something.
Come on, Mr. Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Incorporated, Rex, Georgia. Again, I'm going to say, for businesses in this county, I welcome new people and new business in this county. What I'm failing to get across to the Commissioners is Zag and everybody makes recommendations. But what important part you're leaving out of these recommendations is cleanliness, is the litter. In the last statement I just made about a business, y'all added things to it but made no statement as to cleanliness... y'all added things to it but made no statement as to cleanliness and the litter. We have to start somewhere. And in your remarks, Mister Chairman, at the state-of-the-county meeting that we held last year, which I applauded, you would say that we would hand out citations to people who don't keep their businesses both inside and outside clean. We have to make all of this to keep our county clean part of the conditions of which people come and apply for businesses. Again, I want to say, I'm not against nor for this man, but I am against trash and turning our county into a third-world nation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Anybody else want to speak in opposition? Sir, do you want to have anything else left to say before I turn it over to Commissioner Hambrich? You've got two minutes.
I would like to say thank you, not for anything but to change the zoning of that property to suit this business. And I know used car automotive business is something that most counties don't want all because of how it's being operated, as in it makes. But Mister Chairman, if I'm given this opportunity, I will make sure that I utilize it to the best and make sure that it is not like a used car dealership. I would try my best to make sure that it look clean and where it kept all the time.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hambrich?
Uh, yes, Mister Chairman and Board. Uh, I would like, well, I would like to go along with ZAG's recommendation of denial.
Is there a sucking? Is there a sucking?
I think Commissioner sings.
I'm sorry, I second, I was muted.
All right, Commissioner Gregory seconded the motion. Any questions? Here and none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It fails. Thank you. Your request is denied.
The next item is B O C twenty-ten zero-zero-seven-zero. C U P to allow convenience store with gasoline sales.
Chairman and Board, as Greg appears before us. The applicant was approved by ZAG. Staff recommended approval of the applicant's request. Uh, staff recommended approval with conditions, and I can read those conditions for the record. Uh, staff recommended, one, the site shall be limited to a convenience store with gasoline service station with no more than four service pumps. The existing canopy shall be removed and replaced as shown on the site plan, such to the action by the zoning, aboard of zoning appeals. Condition number two, all trash-refused areas are to be enclosed on three sides with brick or other masonry materials consistent with the primary building's materials. Condition number three, no outside vending, vending machines. Condition number four, must provide one trash receptacle container for each service pump at the store entrance. And lastly, condition number five, remove all old ground, underground gas tanks and replace with new underground gas tanks. I'd like to state that condition five was added by ZAG.
All right. Applicant present?
Evening, Commissioner, members of the board. John Jordan with Hect Walker P C two-oh-five Corporate Center Drive, Stockbridge, Georgia, three-oh-two-eight-one. Before I start, I'd like to hand out a packet that we created to the board to go along with this presentation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, good.
Uh, we represent the applicant for this item, which is the owner of the property, Fifty-six-Ninety Investment LLC, uh, which was owned, which is owned by Sammy Tesfe, who's here with us tonight as well, in case there's any questions later on. Um, the property is located at Fifty-six-Ninety Riverdale Road, which is the reason for the name of the company. And my client is requesting a conditional use permit in order to redevelop the property for a gas station convenience store. Uh, the property is currently zoned for general business, G B, which does permit a convenience store gas station with a conditional use permit, which is what we're requesting of the board here tonight. This use would also be consistent with the county's comprehensive future land use plan and future land use map. And it actually originally was a gas station long ago, before it was then sold and then utilized as a car wash, as you can see on the screen right here. That car wash has gone out of business, and the property is currently vacant. Uh, my client purchased the property recently and is looking to, of course, update the property and tear everything down and build a completely brand-new gas station convenience store, which would be subject to the heightened development standards of the Cherry Hills overlay. This property, to give you an idea of where it's located, is about two miles south of two-eight-five and just south of the intersection between Riverdale Road and Anvil Block, and, sorry, Flat Shoals Road. Across the street is a, uh, storage facility, U-Haul storage facility, a used car lot, as well as a different car wash over there. Next door to the property is a very large dated shopping center. None of those properties were, of course, developed under the, under the overlay heightened development standards. And we're looking to not only enhance this property itself, but we also believe that the enhancement of this property could encourage other properties in the vicinity to update and enhance theirs as well, which would go along with the purpose of the overlay as well. The front page, if you take a look at your handout, it provides a rendering of what my client would like to provide there. And I don't know if this will work, but for the commissioners remotely. But that's what we're proposing. It's gonna have three gas tanks that are dual-sided, as well as a large convenience store to go along with it. Uh, if you look at page two, that was shown by staff. That was the old car wash. But if you look at page three, that's the state of the property right now. So as you can see, it's in desperate need of a facelift, so to speak. We would provide this and much more for this property. Looking at the site plan, you can see we're proposing a forty-one hundred, four-thousand-square-foot building, again, constructed in accordance with the heightened overlay standards. The building would be either one large convenience store or it would be divided into a twenty-nine-hundred-square-foot convenience store and a separate eleven-hundred-square-foot suite for commercial lease. The, everything on the property right now will be torn up, and everything will be brand-new. There'll be a brand-new canopy there. The gas tanks will be brand-new, it'll be completely re-asphalated, restripped. You can see where the proposed gas tanks right there would be on the left. If those were left over from the prior gas station, those would be removed and brand-new gas tanks would be installed as well. And I believe that was a recommendation, a condition recommended by ZAG, which we would do anyway. So we're totally fine with that. My client would own and operate this business, and with about six other employees. His family currently operates two other gas stations in the county. So he has the knowledge and experience to operate a very quality-upstanding business here. Uh, in addition to the employment opportunities for the employees for this business, the redevelopment would increase the property value substantially, which would generate more property tax income for the, for the county in addition to sales tax income from the convenience store and the gas station. Again, this request would allow for the redevelopment of this site, which we obviously would be good for this property itself, but we think for this corridor as well to get the step, get the ball rolling and enhancing this corridor as envisioned by the overlay district. And Stafford's recommended approval, subject to conditions, which are completely acceptable, I believe. I just want to confirm or clarify, just the limit on gas tanks would be, I believe, staff's recommending a limit of four, just to make sure that that contemplates dual-sided gas tanks. So you'd have, gas pumps, so you'd have gas pump, two-sided gas pump, two-sided gas pump, two-sided, like on the rendering. But otherwise, we're completely fine with those conditions. Uh, ZAG has also recommended approval, subject to conditions, that we're, we're completely fine with. And my, my client looks forward to, to being a part of this area of the, the community and would request that this board grant the C U P. And with that, we'd be glad to answer any questions.
How do you, four remaining minutes, you would like to save any for rebuttal?
Uh, we'll save, we'll save all four for right now.
All four. All right, anybody here want to speak in opposition to the applicant's request?
Mister Chairman?
Come on, Mr. Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. I bet you're gonna think I'm about to speak about the trash. Well, you already know my position about the trash. My next position is connectivity in this county. And we should have walking sidewalks in every new construction we have that goes on in this county. I don't know how it happened that we got walking trails everywhere, but we got no damn side, excuse me, no sidewalks. For every new construction that happens, whether it be, be a business, a subdivision, or whatever, there should be sidewalks within those areas and surrounding the property for safety of, of our citizens in the county, of which you hear about on the news, somebody getting run over pretty regular in Clayton County just because we don't have sidewalks. Thank you.
Isn't that a condition of a building, new construction, that they have sidewalks?
Yes, and there's a resisting sidewalk in front of the property along with the MARTA. And the MARTA bus station stop in front there as well.
Okay.
And just to let Mr. Garber know, District Four, we have put that for everything that is coming to this county in District Four. It's been sidewalks, eight-to-ten-foot wide sidewalks.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Anybody else want to speak in opposition?
Mister Chair, did you also let Mr. Garber know that that is part of the zoning?
Yes, that's what we just said. Yes. Anybody else want to speak in opposition? All right, sir, do you want to have anything to add?
The only thing I would add is actually the site plan does contemplate that. There's an existing sidewalk in addition because of the ordinance. We've provided for a twelve-foot multi-use path as well to help provide for connectivity as well. So just wanted to answer that.
Thank you. Commissioner Hambrich?
Uh, yes, Mister Chairman and Board. Thank you so much for that presentation. I don't know if you all are familiar, I think you may be chairman of this particular spot that was a car wash, you know, which really now, since they closed, is an eyesore. So I welcome the new construction, the new convenience store and all. But I would like for the conditions to be read again, so we can make sure that we're all on board with these conditions.
Please read them again.
Definitely with the trash receptacles and the, the whole thing. If, if we could get those read again, read into the minute.
Yes, Chairman, excuse me, Commissioner. The conditions are read as read. The, one, the site shall be limited to a convenience store with gasoline service stations with no more than four service station pumps. The existing canopy shall be removed and replaced as shown at the site plan, subject to the action by the Board of Zoning Appeals. Number two, all trash-refused areas are to be enclosed on three sides brick with brick or other masonry materials consistent with the primary building's materials. Condition number three, no outside vending, vending machines. Condition number four, provide one trash receptacle container for each service pump at the store entrance. And lastly, condition number five, to remove all old underground gas tanks and replace with new underground gas tanks.
Okay, I, I have a question on that one. How will we know if those, if, on number five, if those underground gas tanks are replaced? Because that place is old, and I know I've been around for a long time and have lived on Riverdale Road back a long time ago. And it was always a car wash. I've never known it to be a gas station, but I do know that that's what it was. So how will we know that those underground tanks are being replaced? Is there any way for us to know?
I can answer that briefly. The process that the applicant will have to complete is the technical review committee process, and an L D P will have to be permitted for the applicant for the land disturbance. And that will be a condition that we make sure that is advised and also forward over to the Transportation and Development Department.
Oh, okay, thank you. Now, I'm not sure if we are clear, but it was presented that we are saying four service pumps, but they are two-sided. Do we need to put that in there?
I am not technical with the terms of the, the pumps itself, but I know that, that we can call them service station pumps instead of service pumps. And again, staff is aware of the, the layout in which the applicant is trying to explain.
Okay. Okay, I, I just want us to be clear on that.
All right.
Okay, with all that in place, I would like to recommend approval.
Hold on a second, Commissioner Hambrich. I want to hear from the owner. Are you clear on the stipulations and agree to them?
Yes, I'm clear on the stipulations and agree. It's for N P Ds, I mean, I guess that's another term, terminology. And then, in regards to the tanks, when you register the tanks with the state and the EPA, they are gonna verify that, and they're gonna see that it's gonna be new. They're not gonna allow, like, once you start, I mean, once you dig or you do anything for the tanks, you have to, you have to get new ones. You cannot use old ones.
And you're gonna keep the property clean inside and out, right?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Garber, you heard it, right?
Everything's gonna be brand-new.
Thank you. All right, I'm sorry, Commissioner Gregory.
No, no.
Go ahead.
Hambrich.
Go ahead.
You said Gregory?
No, I corrected myself, but go ahead, Commissioner Hambrich.
Oh, okay, as far as that cleanliness and all, trust me, we will be watching and keeping note of that. But I would like to recommend approval for this, to, to grant the C U P.
With stip, with the stipulations. All right. Commissioner Gregory?
With the conditions?
Conditions.
Oh, yes, with the conditions, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Gregory, did you second the motion?
Yes, I second the motion, sir.
Any questions?
Now, I just have one quick question. There's a, I know one portion here. Oh, I need to wait, I didn't hear the chairman acknowledge I can speak.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Uh, five-nine-six-zero is the name that's listed in the document, but I think we heard fifty-six-ninety is the name of the company.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Oh, no problem. Does that need to be corrected?
The, the actual address is fifty-six-ninety Riverdale Road. Um, I'm not sure if it was accidentally transposed or not, but it is fifty-six-ninety.
Is that what you have showing, Mr. McSwine?
Uh, fifty-nine-sixty was listed, but fifty-six-ninety, we can change, we'll note that moving forward, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Issue unanimous.
The next item is item number thirty-three. MAP dash twenty-eleven dash zero-zero-zero-four. Board of Commissions initiated zoning in District Three and District One.
All right, lastly, Chairman and Board Members, this MAP amendment was initiated here by the Board of Commissioners. The first part of this request is for fourteen parcels of land located within Commissioner District Three, Commissioner Felicia Franklin Warnes' district. Staff has provided you the parcel list of the mentioned addresses and also a graphic of a map showing the proposed change to the M X I, Mixed Use Industrial District. And I will be happy to answer any questions pertaining to this. And I will be happy to answer any questions pertaining to this MAP amendment.
Okay, this is board-initiated, so at this time, is there anyone who would like to speak? No, we don't have to have public hearing?
No, this is just an initiation.
Oh, okay, so we still need to vote on it, though?
Right.
Okay. Commissioner Franklin, how you want to proceed?
I want to approve it.
Actually, they're both, there's two parts of this. There's
District One and
District One and District Three, so you can read both of those together and then you all just make one vote to initiate.
Okay, did you read them both?
No.
Okay, read them both together and we'll take a motion to approve both.
No problem. So part one, Commissioner District Three, Felicia Franklin Warner, for fourteen parcels of land for rezoning requests from the mixed-use District Two, MXI, Mixed Use Industrial District. And would I need to pronounce the parcels or addresses for the record?
No, you can just, just reference that. It's already listed in the
All right. You mentioned the reference parcels, fourteen parcels have been attached to the packages and also in the graphics before you. Now, part two of this request, Clayton County Board of Commissioners, rezoning request for six, excuse me, seven parcels of land zoned from heavy industrial to residential RS one eighty. This request, this request as well, is going to be within Commissioner District One, Commissioner Sonny Gregory's district. ZAG recommended approval of both part one and part two of the request before you.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Davis made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gregory. Any questions? Here and none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. Mr. Reed.
Yes, sir, I would like a executive session on personnel litigation and real estate.
All right, is there a motion to go into executive session for personnel litigation and real estate?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
All right, is there a second?
I second.
Properly moved and seconded. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. Good night.
Oh, can we announce?
Go ahead.
One thing, just wanted to announce to folk that the Lakes Bobby Recreation Center will be having its grand opening this Friday. What is this Friday?
Twenty-second.
The twenty-second? Is it twenty-first or twenty-second?
It's the twenty-second.
The twenty-second at eleven AM with the grand opening at noon, so hopefully folks will come out and see the new rec center that's boppers done.
All right, good night, everyone. All right, motion to, well, motion to reconvene.
So moved.
So moved.
Commissioner Davis made the motion. I believe Commissioner Franklin made the second. Those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed. It's unanimous. Let me do a quick roll call. Commissioner Demont Davis.
Present.
Commissioner Franklin.
Here, present.
Commissioner Gregory.
Here.
Commissioner Hambrich.
Present here.
We are present. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Yes.
I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye.
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 It's unanimous. Good night.